Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the November 12, 2001, regular council meeting for the city of Haltum City. We're very pleased, as we look out over the audience, to see all of you here. We hope you find this council meeting informative about the business of our city. We also welcome those who are watching over our local cable TV channel, HCTV. We're delighted to have you as part of our audience tonight. First item on our agenda is our invocation and pledge of allegiance, Councilmember Bob Hurley.
Mayor, tonight, the invocation will be given by Dr. Cullum, who's the pastor of Summerfield Baptist Church.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, I thank you for this great city of Haltum City and for all the members of the council here and for this meeting that we are having and that we want to begin this meeting by praying to you. We acknowledge your presence here, Father, and, Lord, we thank you that you are a great and mighty God who created this world and you are our Savior. We thank you for sending Jesus Christ, your Son, to die on the cross for us, that we can have forgiveness of our sins and salvation and eternal life, for eternity and abundant life with you here on earth. And we thank you that you are a good shepherd who loves us and who guides us, and as the Book of James says, "If any of you lack wisdom, let them ask of God." So tonight, Father, we come to you and we ask for wisdom, that you will give us wisdom in this entire meeting tonight. I pray that you will give guidance to the members of this fine council who have dedicated themselves to being leaders in this city. And, Father, give them wisdom, Lord, and give them strength and guidance as well. Father, we pray for our country at this time. We pray for our President Bush, for our military leaders, and we pray for justice and for peace as quickly as possible. And we pray for the families of those who lost loved ones today in that terrible jet crash in New York. Oh, Father, may they find peace and comfort in you. Lord, we just love you and we acknowledge your presence here and pray for your guidance. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. In a place, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much for that invocation tonight. We're very pleased to have you here as a guest. We come now to make three presentations. The first, Ms. Alice Platt, if you would come forward to the microphone, I think you have some exciting news, as well as a presentation to make. And while she's coming to the microphone, Mr. Elfrinck, would you like to tell us a little bit about what is about to happen?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Ms. Platt is president of Haltum City Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association. Three members of her group went to the August convention in Austin. During that convention, she was fortunate enough to win a pair of night vision glasses, and they were presented to the group, and what she wants to do right now is make an official presentation from her group of these night vision glasses to our police patrol division for use during their operations. Ms. Platt?
Thank you. And I'm going to take glasses off to read a little bit. Okay, Corporal Myers is filling in for Commander James. Commander James went home ill. And we wanted just to let you know a little bit about the alumni. We're small, Police Academy alumni. What we do is we go out and we try and help out if we're taken out to the malls. Police officers want us at the malls or they want us to do fingerprinting or anything like that, and we try to help out that way. We're also part of 26 other cities that are all through northern Texas, and that's why we went to Austin to learn more with them. And as you said, I won this from Duncanville. I gave it to the Citizens Police Academy group so that we, in turn, can give it to the police department for use at night, and they can use it on their patrol and everything and cut down crime in the city.
Thank you very-
And I thank you for allowing me to be here to do this.
Thank you very much, Ms. Platt.
On behalf of the police department, I'd like to thank you for this valuable tool, and rest assured it will be used nightly, starting tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It's my privilege tonight to present a certificate of recognition and a certificate of appreciation. And while I'm making my way to the podium, Mr. Elfrinck, if you will, introduce each one of these, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This first presentation is to Ms. Bobby Arthur for her services at the Haltum Senior Center. Seven seniors have been recognized out of the many that we have throughout Tarrant County as exceeding, in a major way, the goals that are set for these centers. The Haltum City Senior Center served 18,691 lunches for a result of 101 percent of their goal. And with that, I'll let the mayor go ahead and lead into the actual certificate that we have here.
One of the bright spots in Haltum City, of the many bright spots we have, is the Senior Citizen Center, and this lady that's standing before you tonight makes it happen. And I'm honored to be able to present this certificate of recognition, presented to Bobby Arthur, whereas the Senior Citizen Center of Greater Tarrant County Incorporated hosted a reception on October 26, 2001, to honor area directors that reached their goal for lunches served in the 2000-2001 year. And whereas Bobby Arthur, the director of the Haltum City Senior Citizen Center, was one of the directors to be so honored, and whereas the Haltum City Senior Citizen Center and Bobby Arthur had surpassed their annual goal by 190 lunches to serve a total of 18,691 lunches in one year, in the year 2000-2001, and whereas the Haltum City Senior Citizen Center served an average of 75 lunches a day at 91 cents for the year 2000-2001. Now therefore, I, Calvin Wyatt, Mayor of the City of Haltum City, and on behalf of the council and all of our citizens, would like to extend our appreciation to Bobby Arthur for the commitment and service she provides to the older adults of Haltum City, and we wish her continued success in all of her future endeavors. Ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Bobby Arthur.
It is such a pleasure and a privilege to be a part of Haltum City. At this time, I would like to recognize two staff members, Georgine Jackson, if you'll stand, and Bertha Roden, who also work at the center with me. They also make it happen. Thank you.
Mr. Elfrinck?
Mr. Mayor, the next presentation that you have here is to Ms. Judy Wang, who is the founder and director of the All Asian American Chamber of Commerce, and in recognition of her activities for the recent first annual Mid-Autumn Moon Festival, which was held at Thomas Coliseum, September 29, 2001.
Ms. Wang, would you please join me at the podium, please? Before I read this certificate of appreciation, would you like to introduce your guest that you brought with you tonight?
Oh, this is our-
And would you come to the microphone, please?
I think you introduce yourself.
My name is Eva Wu and one of the members of the All Asian American Chamber of Commerce.
My name's Betty Ly Johnson. I'm the member two.
My name is David Deng. I'm also a member.
We're very pleased to have all four of you here tonight, and it's my pleasure to present this certificate of appreciation to Judy Wang, whereas Judy Wang founded the All Asian American Chamber of Commerce in November 1999 to enhance and assist in economic and business opportunities between eastern and western cultures, and whereas, and I'm going to use the initials now and not go through the name, the A.A.A.C.O.C. and the All Asian Cultural and Education Foundation Incorporated, a sister nonprofit organization, to promote racial harmony, equality, and unity through multicultural exchanges, and whereas the A.A.A.C.O.C. and the A.A.A.C.E.F. proudly presented the first annual Mid-Autumn Moon Festival at the Thomas Coliseum on September 29, 2001, and whereas the three objectives of this event were to promote cultural exchange, to promote mooncakes, which symbolize harmony, romance, and reunion, and to raise funds to give financial support to the victims of the September 11, 2001 tragedy. Now therefore, I, Calvin Wyatt, Mayor of the City of Haltum City, and on behalf of the council and all of our citizens, do hereby deem it an honor and a pleasure to express our appreciation to Judy Wang for coordinating and presenting the first annual Mid-Autumn Moon Festival and wish her continued success in her future endeavors. Ms. Wang?
Thank you. Actually, you know, it's not just me, it's the whole entire organization, especially like Eva, she having helped the chamber every Friday night, and Betty every Thursday night, and David then help out the sponsorship for the Dragon Dance. With all this volunteer help, that's impossible. Also, we appreciate the City, Haltum City, give us the sponsorship. Without the sponsorship, it's impossible either. And as the certificate actually go to a lot of heroes, they were not here today, like Ni Chuan and Ma Xia, they helped pass out the poster, you know, they work store by store and put out the poster, and that's why they can help the event possible. And we hope we'll continue to work hard and become an annual event, and thank you so much. It's a great, great honor. Thanks.
And we're very honored to have all of you here with us tonight. It is our pleasure now to canvass the November 6, 2001, election results. We have two resolutions that we need to take action on, and I've asked Ms. Harris to read those totals, first of all, regarding Resolution 2001-04701.
The first resolution is Resolution Number R 2001-04701, and that's for the bond election for our five propositions. Proposition number one, the issuance of $4 million of general obligation bonds to construct street improvements. The votes were total for 1,471, total against 427. Proposition two, the issuance of $3,500,000 of general obligation bonds to construct and equip a central fire station. Total votes for 1,430, total of votes against 457. Proposition number three, the issuance of $4 million of general obligation bonds to construct and equip a city library and the purchase of land. Total votes for 993, total votes against 878. Proposition four, the issuance of $250,000 of general obligation bonds to construct and equip park facilities, including hike and bike trails at Little Fossil Creek. Total votes for 1,074, total votes against 778. Proposition five, the issuance of $4 million of general obligation bonds to construct flood control and other drainage improvements at Little Fossil Creek. Total votes for 1,409, total votes against 506.
Gentlemen, you have heard the reading of the results. We're now open for motion for approval of this canvassing of the returns and declaring the results. Councilmember Hurley?
Mayor, I'm moved that we approve Resolution R 2001-04701 in all five propositions.
Councilmember Markham?
Second.
Councilmember Everett?
That was for a second, Mayor.
Okay. If you would, gentlemen, if there's no discussion on the motion, if you'll register your votes. And you can see that passes. Ms. Harris, the next resolution, please.
The next resolution is Resolution R 2001-04801, and this resolution was for the approval of an additional one-quarter percent sales tax increase for street improvements. The total votes for was 1,189, total of votes against 692.
Okay, gentlemen, you've heard the reading of the results. Councilmember Henderson?
Make a motion that we approve the Resolution Number R 2001-04801.
We have a motion. Councilmember Williams?
Second.
Have a motion second. If you will, register your votes, gentlemen, and that carries by unanimous vote. At this time, I want us to take a few minutes. I want to make a statement regarding our bond election and then to allow each member of the council, if they'd like to make any comment or statement in that regard. Following that, I've asked the city manager if on behalf of the staff he cares to make any comments, and I have one speaker's card from Ms. Rexanne Grove, who would like to address this issue before the council. So I'll begin, and then we'll go to members of the council. First, I want to express my appreciation to the citizens of Haltum City who cared enough about our city and its future to go to the polls and to vote on these six propositions that were placed before us. Your message came through loud and clear that the majority of Haltum City voters want to see this city move forward and to truly be the proud and progressive city we claim to be. You gave both elected officials and staff a very strong mandate regarding your expectations about road conditions, public safety, economic development, and quality of life issues. Because of your votes and other projects already in place, we will see a new and improved Haltum City emerge over the next five to 10 years. I also want to say thank you to the Bond Study Committee, who put in a lot of time over a long period of time exploring our needs and assessing our financial ability to fund those needs. This group is to be commended for their thoroughness, and I want you to know I appreciate that, as well as your vision, your courage to take these bold steps you took. This group asked the tough questions, and they insisted on honest answers. They came forth with a unanimous recommendation to call a bond election and place before the voters the items that were on the ballot, knowing that passage would enable the city to catch up, where they perceived we'd been lagging behind for a long time. Another group I want to express my appreciation to is the members of this council. They accepted the recommendation of this Bond Study Committee, and they took a political risk in proposing a bond issue of this size, especially after September the 11th. Members of this council worked hard, and they worked behind the scenes on a one-on-one basis, educating the voters of this community in their sphere of influence and answering questions they had raised. I challenge the members of this council that they and I together work as hard for this bond issue to get it passed as we did to get elected, and I'm very proud of the members of this council because they rose to the occasion, because they believed it was good for Haltum City, because they knew it was a great, as well as an affordable opportunity, for Haltum City to take a big step forward, and because that bond issue and the proposals on the ballot was consistent with this body of elected officials' vision for Haltum City. And the final group I want to say thank you to is made up of current and former staff, as well as former elected officials, who were wise enough to start as much as 10 years ago to work with the federal government, with the Corps of Engineers, as well as to structure our bonded indebtedness so Haltum City, in the year 2001, could take a giant step within our current property tax rate, without having to increase that tax rate to fund the improvements brought about by this bond election. And I want to assure the voters in Haltum City, both those of you who are here in this live audience, as well as those who are watching on TV, that this mayor and this council is keenly aware that you've shown confidence in us by entrusting us with this great responsibility. I want to make a commitment to the citizens of Haltum City that we're going to do everything we can, both as elected officials and as a staff, to be good stewards and make the commitment that the money that you've approved will be spent on the projects you've approved in that bond election. And to that end, I've asked our city manager to give us an overview at the next council meeting on each of these propositions, when they'll start, when they're projected to be completed, when the bonds are expected to be sold. I've also asked him to update our citizens at least twice a year in writing, published in our city newsletter, of the status of each proposition. And I've also asked him to include other capital projects, such as the animal shelter, the soon-to-starten public works facility, the Carson Street Reconstruction, Broadway Reconstruction, the Loop 820 Access Road, and our ongoing street improvement program in that update. I believe accountability to our citizens and communication with our citizens is crucial as we move forward with these many projects. So good things are ahead for Haltum City, and thanks to everybody who worked to make that possible. Members of the council, comments in this regard? Councilmember Williams?
I'll start off where they say everything. I echo what Mayor Wyatt said about thanking the voters for coming out and showing your support. I was very surprised at the turnout that we had. The items that are on here were very important. The flood area down in the southern part of Haltum City has been, I moved here in '54, it was flooding when I came here, and now we're finally going to get some relief from that. We're going to take a lot of land that was useless, and we're going probably promoting to future development to get on the tax rolls to help ease the tax burden in Haltum City. Mayor Wyatt's already thanked, and I echo all the thanks that he had, but I also would like to thank a group called the Friends of the Library and the Library Board. This group teamed together and drew some other people in with them and went out and publicized what was going on, let everyone know exactly what the election was about, what the sales tax was about. They didn't just pick one item. They could have just took their library and just tried to push it, but they pushed every item, and I really appreciate their undying effort to do that. I know the guys in the fire department, Chief McIntyre and his group, are going to be very appreciative of what we got coming. We've got a ladder truck be here sometime, probably late November, early December, and we need a place to park it, and when this new bond election is going to have us room to expand where we can serve all citizens of Haltum City. And I also want to thank my council members to come up and ask for a quarter cent sales tax right after a tragic deal in September, but I think this council all agrees together. We're not going to let terrorists come up and hamper what's going to happen in Haltum City or our lives. We're going to go ahead and do what we feel is good for the citizens of Haltum City. And our hearts go out to the people that were hurt today or killed in the accident on the September 11th deal. But I do, I am happy that citizens of Haltum City have banded together pretty well mostly for going for this bond election, and I think in the years to come, they would be proud of this election that we had. Thank you.
Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would like to thank each of the citizens that took their time to come out and vote and to help carry Haltum City into what is going to be a very bright future. I'd like to thank each of the members of this council and what they've done, and I'd like to call some special recognition to the new kid on the block here, Councilmember Tracy Henderson, who brought an idea before this body that was truly on the cutting edge of what cities are doing now around the state of Texas. It was Councilmember Henderson's thought process that we should entertain the idea of looking at a quarter cent sales tax increase to help fund the repairs on our streets. This one move is going to increase the speed by which we can work on the streets in Haltum City by 30, 40 percent over what it would have been had we not done this. This will be for a four- or five-year term, and it was a one-time deal. We had one chance to get it. It was brought up at a period of time to where we had so many things coming at us, we tended to look past some of the things that would really benefit the city, and Councilmember Henderson was sitting there and had done some research and some reading, and I personally would like to congratulate you for having brought that up. You bet.
Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't believe I can add anything to what Mayor Wyatt and Mayor Pro Tim Williams said and Councilmember Jennings. Just a few thoughts. Our motto, the motto of our city is proud and progressive. This people, the citizens that went out there and voted, want this city to be and continue to be proud and progressive. If we're not proud and progressive, we're stagnant, and the people told us very loud and very clearly, they want us to see, wants to see this city go forward. They love this city, they care for this city, and they want to be a better city today, tomorrow, than it is today. And I'm very grateful for the people who got out and voted. You've shown a lot of confidence, you've shown a lot of faith in this council, and I'm very thankful. Mayor?
Councilmember Hurley?
I'd just like everybody to know that I've lived here a long time, and I've worked here for the city for a long time, and back in the days when I worked here, it was known as, it wasn't known for being proud and progressive, but you know, that's the way things are. Well, I'm here to say that I'm proud to be a small part of a city that is now becoming proud and progressive, and I think we're getting there.
Are the members of the council desire to address the citizens at this time? There being none, Mr. Elfrinck?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would like to add my thanks to the Haltum City staff members, who worked very hard with the different committees and with the council and with outside people, trying to explain these issues and inform the public as to the considerations that had to have been taken into account on all of the different things that we were trying to do. This started back, really, in late March, with many meetings, as were mentioned, and site visits to the old facilities to take a look at exactly what our present conditions were. I would also like to thank our financial advisor, Mr. Mark McLeidy of Southwest Securities, without whose financial advisement and help this would not be possible. I'd like to thank Mr. Tom Andelich, a late director of Southwest Securities, whose long-term planning, going back 30 years with this city, made this possible. I'd like to thank the council for their unanimous support of all of these issues, which is absolutely essential for such a progressive project. I would like to thank the Friends of the Library and the Library Board, Ms. Patsy Sullivan in particular, for the hard work that was done, and I know there are other members there that, I'm afraid I don't know all of your names, I'd read every one of them off if I could. Mr. Randy Heffley and Mr. Bob Myers from Consolidated Construction helped get the word out on the various issues, and there are members from our Firemen's Association who worked hard on all of these projects. And finally, as the mayor did mention, we will have a discussion at our next meeting on November the 26th, where our financial advisor will be here and myself. We will be open to discussion and questions concerning the timing of these events. I'm sure if everyone had their preference, we'd issue all the bonds next week and issue contracts the week after and start turning some dirt the week after that, but I'm afraid that's not the reality. that's not the reality. Much of the timing involving these five or six projects relates to priorities as set out by the bond committee and agreed to by the council. And then one of the other major linchpins on the issuance and timing of these issues is the ability of the city to pay for these projects without raising taxes. That is essential. If we tried to do all of this upfront in the next year, it could be done, but it could not be done without raising taxes. And so we intend to do the very best we can to keep that promise, move forward with these projects in a responsible and well-planned manner, and do so within our existing ability to pay the debt that will be forthcoming on these major products, projects. Thank you.
Councilmember Williams.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry in my statement. I turned over another piece of paper and I forgot. I'd also like to send a special thank you to Jimbo Wyatt for his undying effort, his pickup going all over town, educating the voters and stuff, and he's out in the audience tonight. And I don't know how many hours he worked or how many miles he drove, but every time I talked to him on the phone, he was repairing signs or educating somebody, and I left him out when I said that while he was on. I apologize to Jimbo. I want to say thank you.
Ms. Grove. I believe you would like to address not only the council but the citizens of Halton City in regard to the vote for approval of the bonds for the new library. If you would, give us your name and address for the record, please.
Is that good? More? Is that better? Okay. My name is Rexanne Grove, and my address is 3929 Emerald Oaks and Halton City. I just wanted to thank, well, all of the people you thanked, but I want to say on behalf of the Library Board that we want to thank the bond committee for proposing that you establish this bond issue on the library. And I want to thank the council for being so supportive and giving us this opportunity to vote on the library. And I want to thank all of the people who worked to get the bond issue passed, and especially Patsy Sullivan, sitting back there, who's also on the Library Board. She was very instrumental. Among others, there were many other people who worked very hard as well, and I want to thank all of them. And I also want to thank the citizens who had enough faith in us to vote for it, even though we haven't chosen a piece of property yet. And I want to let them know that that's first on our list, and we're going to start looking, and it will be in the center of the city, as we promised. And we will build the best library that we can build, and I know all of you intend to do that as well. And I hope that this will carry us well into the future with our expanding population and diverse cultural base, and make Halton City proud and progressive. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grove. Having canvassed the votes and certified the results of that, we go now to our consent agenda. We have items four through 17. Gentlemen, you've had an opportunity to look at that. If I could, I'd like to have a motion at this time regarding the consent agenda. Councilmember Jennings.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda, please.
Councilmember Avery.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Councilmember Williams.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, I'm going to approve the consent agenda, and I'll be abstaining from items number nine and number 10. One of them I have a financial interest in, and the other one is at 200, 200 foot of my financial interest.
Okay. If you would, gentlemen, register your votes, and that passes unanimously. We come now to the Visiter Citizens Forum, and we do have one speaker's request card, Mr. Bill Louthen. If you would come forward at this time, give us your name. And, okay, not ready for that yet. We'll do that when it's time to address the specific item later on. I get used to these yellow cards, and that usually means the Visiter Citizens Forum. So, we'll look forward to your address a little bit later in the council meeting. There are no others who wish to address the council at this time. We move now to the public hearings. We have items number 18 through 23. All of these are public hearings regarding moving property, changing the zoning from C3 to C5, and in one instance on item number 21 from C4 to C5. The Planning and Zoning Commission has looked this over, their staff has gone over it, recommend approval, and I talked with our legal counsel earlier, and we will open public hearings on all six of these items at one time, and anyone who would like to address any one of the six requests for zoning change to the new C5 organization will have an opportunity to do that. Before I open, or as I open the public hearings, and I do that at this time, those items for, specifically, I want to read into the record, is Z043-01, the application of Trey Fowler, 4720 East Bellknap. Z046-01, the application of E.B. Brister, property located at 4736 and 4740 Northeast 28th. The third one is Z-047-01, the application of Jimmy Enos on property at 4800 Northeast 28th Street. The next item is Z.050-01, the application of Randall Price, property located at 4920 Northeast 28th. And then Z051-01, the application of Randall Price, property located at 4900 Northeast 28th Street. And finally, Z-052-01, the application of Abdelhamed Reema, the property located at 4925 Northeast 28th Street. So having read the specific items into the record, I now open a public hearing. If anyone is in the audience who would like to speak on any one of these that I have just mentioned, you have the opportunity to do so at this time. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of any of these items? Is there anyone who would like to speak against any of these items? There being none, I declare the public hearings closed, and we move now to the corresponding ordinances. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If it pleases the council, I would like to move that we approve or reject all of these on one motion, and I will be prepared to make a motion if the council is in agreement.
Okay. Mr. Attorney, do we need to read those specific ordinance numbers into the motion?
Mayor, I think it'd be a good idea to read the ordinance numbers just for record-keeping purposes to benefit the city secretary if nothing else.
Mr. Jennings, if you would, please.
I'm prepared to do that. Mr. Mayor, move to approve Z04601, Z04701, Z05001, Z05101, and Z05201.
Okay. Councilmember Williams.
Yes, shouldn't we be doing the ordinance? Should we read the ordinance in there with her, councillor?
I was just checking with Helen. She says she's okay with.
You're okay with that?
The motion the way it was made, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. That would be for a second.
Okay, we all do understand what we just did, okay? Any discussion? No discussion, if you will, gentlemen, register your votes, and that passes with a unanimous vote. Item number 24 on our agenda tonight is a request by a citizen to amend the minutes of the August 13th, 2001 council meeting. You gentlemen are aware of what this request is. We have three options. We can vote to grant the citizen's request to change the minutes. We can vote to deny, or we can present no motion and take no action, and the minutes stand as they currently read. What is the pleasure of the council in this regard? Do I have a motion? Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move that the reading of the minutes stand as approved previously on the August 13th, 2001 reading.
You've heard the motion. Do I have a second? Councilmember Williams.
I want to ask the legal attorney, should I abstain from this?
No.
Then I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? There being none, if you'll register your votes, and that carries by unanimous vote. The next item, Mr. Elfrank, is consideration and our action regarding approval of a request from IESI for a rate increase. If you would, please.
Mr. Mayor, council, this is an item that's been brought before us for the second time by the representatives of IESI. The city has had a contract with them since 1996, which was renegotiated in 1999. In that '99 contract, they were granted permission to come before this body on an annual basis for rate increases based on the Consumer Price Index. This is their first time to approach this body for that rate increase, their second appearance for the first time, I should clarify. At our first meeting in October, the council was presented with the three options that we see here on the first page of this letter from IESI. Option number one being a 7.4 percent increase in all residential, commercial, and industrial rates. The contract terms and conditions under option one would remain unchanged. Under option two, IESI proposes a 3.75 percent increase in their rates, but they would like to ask for an extension of their current contract for the reduced increase through October of 2007. This is an extension that is currently in their existing contract that they would like to exercise. In option number three, they are proposing the same 3.75 percent increase in rates, but they are offering to relocate and actually reconstruct and relocate both their corporate headquarters and their operations center to a site that would be guaranteed to be within the confines of Halton City. This would be approximately a five-acre site, housing a facility approximately $1.5 to $2 million in value, again for both their corporate center and their operations where their fleet is serviced and headquartered at. In return for this additional incentive, this additional consideration, they are asking for a continuation of their contract for an additional four years from the amount that is already in the existing contract as a possible extension to the year 2011. Option number three is the option that is recommended by staff to the council, and is the option that is of the three that is preferred by IESI. With that said, Mr. Bob Neese is here who may wish to answer any questions the council might have, or if staff may do so.
Mr. Neese, any comments you want to make before we open this up to the council to ask questions?
Oh, yeah. First thing I'd like to say, thank you, Mayor, members of council. I'd like to appreciate the opportunity to come for you tonight with this request. Again, it has been two years since the last rate adjustment. Currently, the rate adjustments are based on two factors, one being a CPI increase over the last year, and the other factor would be the disposal price increase. Option number one includes both the disposal and the CPI increase. Option two and three is disposal price increase only, voiding out the CPI adjustments. We find also that number three is the most attractive, number one, for the taxing center for the city, and in actuality, it only adds an additional four years to the existing contract terms. And we'd be glad to discuss some of the things that we talked about in the pre-council as well.
Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we get started, I think it'd be nice if they could bring the visual aid that we had in pre-council out so that we can put that on HCTV.
Sure.
As far as the proposed facility, if that'd be okay. And while they're doing that, I'd like to discuss one or two of the options that we had talked about earlier. We mentioned option number one, two, and three, and we talked briefly about one in there we called two and a half, by which we would go ahead and authorize the 3.75 percent increase as discussed, extend the contract through the 2011 period, which would be an additional four years. And then we had discussed a possible two-year freeze as a codicil to that type of agreement. And this would, this two-year freeze would take place after the April increase that we had discussed. So basically, what we would be looking for there would be for IESI to agree that for a period of two years from that point, there would be no further increases as part of that contract. We never got a, you know, we brought it up, but we didn't get any feedback from IESI as to how you felt about that in pre-council. Would that be something that you would be receptive to?
That would be something that we would accept. Basically, that would be a 1.75 percent adjustment in April, and therefore, after that, we would freeze the rates for two years. We appreciate the opportunity for your consideration on this, on the item, and we think it'd be a, we feel like we've had a great partnership so far. We feel like our corporate partnership, our sponsorship with the schools. We want to be here in Halton City. We want to continue this business relationship. For the most part, our record, our service record, we think has been above standard and hopefully exceeded expectations. So, be glad to hear any comments regarding the service as well. But again, we would accept that recommendation.
Councilmember Jennings. Thank you. Councilmember Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to clarify an item in the Star Telegram today. I'm not hammering the Star Telegram, but there was a misprint in there. Would you like to clarify that, Mr. Neese?
Yes, I'd be glad to. It was stated in there, I think what the perception was from various people, that besides the increase for the garbage disposal or for the trash collection would be $6.44, residents would also pay $8, and I believe it was 86 cents, don't quote me on that, in addition to that for recycling. Well, the 886, or whatever that rate was listed in the paper, was a combination, including recycling. So you wouldn't pay actually $15 for the service, you would pay 886 for both. And mind you all that the recycling is a non-mandatory program. You can participate by coming to City Hall and getting your recycling bin and therefore pay based on participation only. So it is a non-mandatory program. So residents do not have to pay that recycling fee if they do not participate in the program.
Well, that did catch the eye this morning when I read it, that the pickup was $2 less than what the recycling was, so we got that clarified.
Right.
I did contact staff today to check the mayor's hotline for the last year, and I noticed, how many customers y'all have? Do you have any idea?
Yeah, residential customers, we approximately have 10,900. I think it may have increased recently. Commercial customers, about 1,300 to 1,400 commercial customers.
So we're looking at 12,000, 13,000 customers.
Right.
Y'all have had four complaints on the mayor's hotline this last year, and I'd called the city manager and had him pull that up for me. I was quite surprised. I think it's a very good record to hold, that that's all the complaints that you have. I know the council fills some on their own, but I don't know about the rest of the members. I think they're like me. Anytime we filled a complaint, I think y'all came forward and took care of it immediately. I would like to point, ask a question on the trucks that you have. Currently, do you know what value they are?
Yeah, estimated assessed value on our assets, and this is not including property, our new facility would be in the area of 1.2 to 1.4 million, that assessed value.
So with the trucks in the new facility, you plan to be able to be right at 3 million?
That's a good estimate, yes, sir.
And Mr. City Manager, we would, could you tell us what we might net from that?
Each million dollars of property valuation brings in at our current tax rate about $4,575. So between one and a half and $2 million worth of plant and equipment valuation there, we're looking at about between 8, $9,000 per year, and that would probably increase through the years as property values continue to increase, which has been rather gradual here in Halton City. And during my tenure, it has actually decreased for several years in a row, so there's no guarantee for that revenue.
Okay, and if we did the, what did you say, two and a half or three and a half was your?
Option two and a half, yeah.
Option two and a half. Option two and a half, would we be locked in and guaranteed that IESI would relocate their facilities here?
Right.
And this would also ease the strain of the pickup trucks, or the, lack for a better word, garbage trucks that sit over on Beet Street, they would all move to the same facility?
Right. This would guarantee, option two and a half would guarantee the new construction of a new facility to include these office, enough office space to handle corporate, regional, and district divisional offices, as well as the operating center itself. And most people have noticed that along Beet Street at 3330 North Beach, we've got, we're almost pretty much in a residential area right behind the facility. So it does not make an ideal location for this type of business. And this would definitely be, and if some have time to come look at the rendition, if they would notice, the front of the facility is not your typical garbage company, or what one might think of a garbage company. It more looks like a manufacturing-type distribution business. It is high-class and would all fit nicely in Halton City. And we, this is all guaranteed, that we would locate that facility inside the city.
I was wanting to know if Mr. Sariano might be able to zoom in on that map, or maybe at the time of editing this, he can do that. The facility we looked at is quite eye-pleasing facility, and I think if we could get the trucks moved from the Beet Street facility, that would be a plus for Halton City. I have no further questions.
Any other questions or comments? We've not accepted a motion yet. I've not asked for that, and we're not quite ready. We have one speaker's card wishing to address this issue. Councilmember Jennings?
I'd like to get in line for that motion when you're ready to do that.
Any other comments, questions, gentlemen? We do have one speaker's card filled out in this regard, Mr. Bill Louthen, if you'll come forward at this time. Identify, give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes.
My name's Bill Louthen. I live at 1924 Higgins Lane. I own a business at the corner of Stanley Keller and Halton Road. I would have been here last meeting, but we had a slight emergency. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to bring some things up that I think you guys need to be aware of. I am not against the rate increase at all. I'm in business. Prices go up, things go up, but there are some charges I do not think are fair. It was stated a while ago that they only received four complaints in the last year because if the average businessman is like me, your complaints are going towards the city. Police are not capable of stopping the illegal dumping. I have to keep my dumpster locked constantly, even during the day. You leave it unlocked for three hours and somebody's dumping it. I just, I would wonder how they can justify charging $17.50 a month for the right to put a lock on that dumpster. I have contacted the police several times about the illegal dumping. They claim there's nothing they can do unless you catch them in the act. I have dug through there, found names, addresses, all kinds of stuff. To me, it's clear who's doing the dumping. Police says they can't do anything about it. I did catch one of them about a month ago, walked out the back door, they were dumping, and took the police, gave the police the license vehicle number, told them I wanted to press charges, never heard a word, nothing. As far as I know, it just went in the dumpster with the rest of it. I would like the IESI representative to tell me why we should be required to pay $17.50 a month for the right to lock that dumpster. Doesn't take them 10 seconds longer, they dump it the same way. It's an automatic unlocking deal. They put it on the truck, up, go, unlocks. When they drop it back down, it locks itself back. Another one on this bill is the Halton City Crime Control Deal. Doesn't amount to much. You guys can't control illegal dumping? Take the charge off of there. You know, it all adds up. Right under that one, we've got Halton City Tax. Could somebody explain to me what that one is? My trash bill's starting to look like my telephone bill, a bunch of charges that all add up, you know, you guys talking to millions. I'm a small businessman, there's lots more of them just like me out here. It all adds up. We've got to, we've got to take care of what we can. The main question that I've got is if somebody from their company could explain to me why we should pay the $17.50. I can see maybe a nominal fee, but $17.50 adds up with tax, like $226 a year. A company my size, that is a pretty good chunk of money.
Okay, we will ask Mr. Neese to come back to the lectern, if he would, and address that issue. And, Mr. Louthen, you also had a question about the, what is the HC tax that showed up?
Right.
And we'll get the city manager to address that issue as well.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that comment, and the way I can address that, there's two, there's two situat, I think when the contract was originally discussed, the issues with locks, the auto locks definitely do not, they're prevented, or they're there to reduce the amount of time that it takes to get out of the truck, unlock the container, and therefore, they do a great job at that. They are expensive, and they don't hold up that well. They are a $65, a $65 mechanism. The replacement on those things and the maintenance on that stuff is high, so we constantly have to replace those. And if those things aren't working properly, and that can be the case with these front-load commercial trucks, and the materials, when you're, when the hopper gets full, and those locks and the containers go inside the hopper when they're dumping the container out, those locks can get bent and destroyed. And that's why the fee is somewhat high, because they do cost a lot to replace. They're not, they're not as cheap as people think to put on. If they're not working properly, or if you have an extra pickup problem with public dumping, we shouldn't charge you for something that's not working. So obviously, if those locks are not to your standard, then we would need to come to you and, you know, maybe some reimbursements on some months where that lock was not working properly. We'd be glad to do that. And you can, in fact, Gary Carter, who is at the division site, you can give Mr. Carter a call and discuss that, and he'll be glad to credit your invoice for that.
Thank you, Mr. Neese.
Sure.
If you'll come back to the podium.
You guys, I don't, some of you guys know that I've had a little bit of problem differences with the police department, and I've nicknamed one of our police representatives, Mr., can you think what his name is? Anyway, I'm getting a political answer here. I have had a lock on my dumpster for, since before IESI took over, never been replaced, except when they changed companies, never had a problem with it. I figure up six years, $17.50, $17.50 a month. I bought several of those locks, and they haven't replaced one of them. I don't have any problem with it. Right there.
Anything further, Mr. Neese?
Not really, as far as the rates go on that, the monthly fee on that, no.
Mr. Elfrink, to answer his other question, and then Councilmember Williams has his light on.
Mr. Louthen mentioned another fee that was on his bill. I believe he described it as a police donation fund. For quite some time, a number of years since before my tenure here, we have had voluntary donation funds if, but we have had a number of customers who, at different times, have come to the realization that these are voluntary donations. If he would place a call to our utility billing department, they will remove that fee from his bill immediately. And with regard to his last item, which was about the HC tax, I'm afraid the state law requires us to charge tax on the service of refuse collection, since it's provided by a private vendor, and we have no choice but to charge a tax.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes, sir. I'd like to address a couple of things. One, Mr. Louthen had brought up about illegal dumping in his dumpster. I assume that we have some sort of an ardent covering, dumping trash in a dumpster that doesn't belong to you. I know he mentioned he'd found some addresses in his dumpster, which someone could have grabbed, someone, I don't know who would steal somebody's trash and go dump it. But as far as the gentleman backing up, or the lady or whoever it was, that backed up to his dumpster to dump, and there was a license plate number taken, I'd like to address that to the city manager, to it with the police department, and find out what the problem is on that. If a citizen goes to the problem, to look at the crime and see the person making the crime and make a report, I believe we as a city, I think we need to follow up on that and give him some answer as to what's going on about that. And to Mr. Neese, Mr. Louthen brought up a good deal. He's, $17.50 a month, that means he's buying three locks a year, and he says he's not having any problems. So there is something there that we might need to look at. I'm not trying to micromanage your company, but I do understand that Mr. Louthen, you know, if he's having to pay that additional amount and he's not having a lock problem, it's just like we talked about, bulk pickup, you know, if we charged everybody that and then just a few people used it, so is that something we could look into?
It is. I have a suggestion for tonight, and it's something that could easily be in the addendum or to the contract, and that would be on auto lock systems, okay? We, the commercial business could actually pay upfront for the lock in full. And that means if it gets replaced every time, that they could pay the fee to have the lock put back on there if they wanted the lock. So for example, if it was $65 for the lock, they could pay it upfront for a container with locks, pay the $65 fee instead of the $17.50, okay? Unless they have a locking bar. But tell you the truth, we ought to put, we ought to put auto locks on all of our containers now, and Gary may, there may be some instances where that does not apply. And to go back to the $17.50, it, I think when you, to go back to when it was originally started at $17.50, if that driver has to get out of that truck and unlock the container, okay, depending on how many times he gets picked up, if it's three times a week, that's a lot of extra time the driver spends getting out of the truck to service the container. So that's another situation where there's not an auto lock. Now, the auto locks, he is correct, those have changed, it's technology, it does allow us to keep things moving. As long as those locks are maybe paid for by the customer, they have maybe an option if they don't want the auto locks, they want the locking bar. Gary, do we have a lot of situations where we have non-auto lockings now in Halton City?
No, most of ours are auto locks.
Okay. I think that's probably the best way to go, and that way, if they're damaged, normally they're damaged in the sense of the type of material's been put in the container, so it's an option for you to consider, and we'd be glad to do that.
I think probably part of Mr. Louthen's problem up there, I'm a little familiar with his business, the time that he closes leaves a lot of time between there and the end of the night that someone could come in there and dump. So if you would get with him and try to come up with some sort of agreement, I think he has a logical complaint.
Sure.
You know, that's awful high insurance on a $65 lock.
Technology has been able, we have been able to-
And I want to thank Mr. Louthen. If a citizen doesn't come up and tell us this, I wasn't even aware that they had locks on them. So I would appreciate if you could do that, and I would appreciate if the city manager could address Mr. Louthen's other problem.
Yeah, we'll take a look into that with him.
Council, anything further before I receive a motion regarding item number 25? Councilmember Jennings, I believe you are ready to make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move that the city council approve the request of IESI for the rate increase as discussed, with the initial increase of 3.75%, extending contract through 2011, freezing the rates for two years after the April increase that we talked about. And as an addendum to this that we haven't talked about until right now, I would also like to make it part of the motion that IESI reevaluate the situation with your locks, because all of the businesses in Halton City that have these are probably going to have that same problem. And if we could, if we can give those people an option to continue as is, or purchase that lock and be out the $65, and perhaps like Mr. Louthen said, not have to buy another one for six years, I think a lot of them would be receptive to that, and I think that would be an excellent addendum, and it shouldn't cause any problem as far as I can see the, you know, the main part of the motion going. If you'd be receptive to that, I would like to so move.
I didn't hear you say anything regarding the location or the relocation of the corporate headquarters and operational facility and the-
Right. As stipulated in item three of the printed material that we got earlier, we'd like to refer to it as item two and a half, I guess. That would also mandate the location of the facility in Halton City as discussed in pre-council.
You've heard Councilmember Jennings' motion. Councilmember Markham?
Second motion.
Councilmember Hurley?
That was for a second.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion before us? If you will, display your vote, and that carries unanimously. We move now to boards and commissions. Councilmember Hurley, I believe you have a resignation.
Yes, sir. I've got a resignation from the Fire Services Board, from Don Parks. And in his place, I would like to appoint Mr. Ernest Bramlett, it's B-R-M-L-E-T-T, he lives at 5640 McCastle Drive. He comes with good experience, and about 18 or 19 years' experience in employment with Halton City. He's now retired as a utility director from South Texas.
You have heard Councilmember Hurley's presentation of a resignation from the Fire Services Board, as well as his appointment to replace the one who had resigned. I'll call for a vote at this time for ratification of his request. And that is a unanimous vote. Councilmember Jennings, you had your light on.
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. Between pre-council and council meeting, I was informed by our library director that due to some new work obligations, the appointment from place one, Ms. Tammy Henry has tendered her resignation from the library board, so at this time, I'd ask the council to ratify that resignation.
Gentlemen, register your vote for ratification, and that passes by unanimous vote. The mayor's appointment to the Parks and Recreation Board of Ms. Linda Dunn, she submitted her resignation stating increased responsibilities at work. I do not have a recommendation for replacement, but I do have this recommendation for resignation. If you will, vote for ratification, and that is by unanimous vote. Any other resignations of board members? We have the matter of the Tarrant Appraisal District. They are requesting a vote from this board on our recommendation for one or more members of their five-member board coming up for election at this time. We discussed this in pre-council. You gentlemen know who the candidates are, and the fact that we have 16 votes that we can cast for one candidate or can divide those among multiple candidates. Councilmember Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. In the list that we had to choose from, we have Mayor C.F. Kelly from our neighbor-in-town, Richland Hills. Mayor Kelly does an excellent job for our community here, and I think he'd be an excellent member on this board, so I would like to make a motion that we cast all 16 votes in his favor.
Councilmember Markham?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to cast all 16 votes from the city of Halton City for Mayor Kelly. If you would, register your vote, and that passes by unanimous vote. The time is 8:42. The council will move now into executive session pursuant to Section 551.071 and .073 of the government code, and we will reconvene into regular session to take any action on matters that were discussed in executive session.